Old what strategies are not acceptable, but the supportable strategies for parameters.
Can I ask you a question about this too?
Yes, yes.
So again, kind of like how it's difficult to for sure say at a specific time, when we say something is supportable, can that necessarily be defined as with further information? Because some of these things are things we've seen rolled out around the country, but we haven't talked about it. So this is.
Yeah, I think supportable means that we would stand behind it if that were the end result, we would not be in opposition to it and that we would stand behind it. Is that the way you would envision it?
Yes, I mean, as we're engaging in a planning process, I mean, so the start time parameters, I see as kind of the bookend. So let's define an acceptable day or a range of the day that we can operate within. And then within that, what are strategies that would be supportable? So if we came back, not to say that saying you're open to it means that that would be a strategy that would be employed, but it could at least be an option.
Could be investigated.
A planning option, correct, that could be thrown into the hopper to see if it produces different results than what we have now. And the question is, knowing that all of these come with their own impacts, just being intentional and thoughtful about that on the front end. So we don't go plan something that on the back end, you know, well, that's not a supportable place to be, because then we'll be right back where we started.
And then respond to that.
Correct. Well, I hear that.
Yeah, so are there, in some ways, it's easier to eliminate the ones that are not supportable from the list if we're in agreement on that, and then we can discuss the supportable ones. Are you okay with that? Are there things on the list that you just would not consider as an option? Like the first one, eliminate?
The first one came back. That would be a challenge.
Yeah.
Let's go cut the one back on.
We can, but are there, did you, okay, I just thought we could cut the list a little shorter by eliminating ones out of the gate. But we don't know number one is out because we haven't really talked about it.
Okay.
But I'm hearing that number one is out.
Should we take a roll call?
So I'm seeing that number one, eliminate basic education bus transportation is not a supportable option exactly.
And I would not recommend it.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, because we.
Conscience seems to dictate that this is a big part of why I considered this kind of a walking exercise. So here are all the things that, here are all the worst case scenarios and the end of the world things that can happen. And so, yeah, just why would we include not busing children? Because I mean.
Because legally, that's an option.
Not dangerous.
Legally, that's an option, and because we ask staff to be as open minded in presenting the options as possible. So I think they've put everything out there in response to our request. Would that be accurate?
That's a suggestion from.
I, we received, I think, back in January or December, received an email or someone, a few people suggested.
So staff is responding to our request, and it's our task now to.
I think the answer sounds to begin with, but I think everybody else, if they felt like that this was a good thing to do, get on with it. Let's get it done.
Let's do it. So we are crossing that one off. Shifting all K-12 start and dismissal times later, so that would mean a different than 7:20 start time, ending later than what it currently does.
So that's moving the entire system, which we've talked about in another dinner format. So the issue obviously that raises is the end of the day dismissal time for elementary schools.
And that was the one that heard Sandy, so they couldn't sell in the community, in their community, but I don't think we know in our community yet.
And I don't know if we need to have complete consensus on these parameters, but because I'm so worried about elementary, all the old ropes nearing with no sidewalks, that was not one of my supportable options.
So within the, up to 3:45, I think was possible.
Well, because if you're shifting K through 12, 9 through 12 needs a very large shift, would be my way of reading that. So a little shift in elementary is one thing, but then that doesn't get us away from 7:20, 7:30 at the high school level. So I wrote that as meeting a dramatic shift to K through 12.
It could be read that way, it could be read any.
Right.
It could also be a potential intermediate step as well. So even 10 minutes to get high schools to 7:30 would put us on par with nearly all of our peer districts in the region. We generally have about a 7:30 to 7:35 start time. So I wouldn't see that as necessarily it's 40 minutes or it's nothing. Are there shades within that that could be part of a longer term solution or as part of an intermediate step?
That is possible. 2015 versus 2017, a couple of these options is a very different conversation. For example, the music one is a very different conversation if it's for the small versus 2017, as is the freshman academy.
And I think, you know, another purpose of this too, is I think the unresolved issue is sort of the timing of that issue. And so the clarity of what's supportable in some of these also speaks directly to timeline as well.
So shifting all to.
So then I officially, that's one of those where I would start off with where I would support with more information. Is that, is that too hedging? Oh, that's not too hedging.
So it's not off the list? How about for the rest?
I guess for all of the rest, I'm just going to give the rest, but that's kind of my answer of all, because I've over the last couple of weeks hearing from the community, I'm feeling very uncomfortable about making that decision of an hour, eliminating music transportation, eliminating heat transportation without having the community input on it. I feel, and we've heard from elementary parents saying, we're not aware that you're doing this. We think we should kind of say as to our kids starting in times and the impact. So I guess all, for me, they're all on the table. If a community task force comes back and says, this is the way we think this should happen, but I don't feel like I can impose those decisions as an individual. Does that make sense?
It does. Are they, I think, there still needs to be, to be some parameters if we, even if we task a task force.
So I guess what I'm saying is, like this one in particular, if a community task force, whether it's within the task force we currently have existing, or a separate one, or a combo of the two, but if they came back and said, we have studied this here, you know, the option that we think, kind of like EBTF here, is what we think makes the most sense, and it has moved the whole system back X number of minutes. Elementary parents are on, elementary principals are on it, as well as high school and all the different programs, and they all say, yes, this is what makes the most sense, then I don't have a very strong opinion. Either way, if the people that are impacted by that have had a chance to weigh in and say, yes, this is okay for us.
So maybe I'll ask it another way.
Okay.
Understanding that more information needs to be acquired on most, if not all of these, are there any others on the list that are not supportable regardless?
That not flat out, not worth investigating?
Just flat out, not, not part of what we would put on the table?
I kind of came about this a different way, so maybe this is part of what's difficult about this discussion, is I really, I think that we do have some values aboard to add to these. And so I came up with about six of the different scenarios. That didn't mean that the other ones were off the table, but six of the different ones that I saw value in that from the report, from looking at what other school districts have done. I think an important thing about this report, and I think what Larry's trying to get to, is that we need to use the information in here as a board and with what other school districts have done, whether we use this report or we look at what other school districts have done, to try and get some guidelines as to where we're going. And then, even though I think 2015, 8:30, if we are agreeing as a board that we're going to have more community endpoint, then we can task, and that's what the Virginia School District did, is they went to the community with different scenarios that were, you know, pretty different, and some were sliding it. But I do have some information to add to a few of these. So that's kind of, because I think like Dawn said, these are kind of black and white, and I had a weight on a couple of them to add something that was more, like we're talking about elementary ban, are we just getting rid of it? And I had some things that could add to maybe enhance what we're talking about, where we're keeping a program, but maybe we're doing, we're having alternative strategies for transportation for those.
So why don't you share them with us now?
Okay. Okay, so on number one, allowing for busing junior high and high school students together, that was one of the alternatives, which I think is number three.
So I think you're working off of a different sheet.
Here.
Are you working out the draft, or are you working out the?
No.
Okay.
I don't know, we got so many. Tell me the number.
Okay, so lap number one.
I should have numbered it.
Okay, got it.
Is that a ratio?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think this is something that we can implement now, potentially. And in the report of the eight districts that they sampled in this study, the researchers concluded that all the districts eventually had middle and high school share buses. And with three districts making the change as part of a comprehensive set of bell-related transportation changes, but everybody ended up doing this in this study. The research also noted that by bundling the middle school and the high school together on buses, they may actually result in a cost savings, or at least mitigate potential associated costs with many later start times. So I found that interesting that everyone could shift into that model in this study. So I thought that was a viable option based on what's already been done.
Keep going.
Okay. Flipping the elementary start times, I already had mentioned how that matches circadian rhythms, but also the Minnesota school district, they did a post, they were the only school district that did this comprehensive post one year follow up after flipping the elementary to 7:30, and high schools began between 8:00 and 8:35. And then from their extensive research on the post outcomes related to flipping those start times, they found 92% of parents liked the change to flip start times, and that later start times had major benefits. So that, to me, was another viable option that had already been done with the school districts, and the community was supportive of it.
Flipping high school and elementary?
Yeah. Of course, I don't think that's a pure flip for us, like you guys were saying. I mean, none of these were necessarily pure flips, they were just.
Right. That's good conceptionally, the idea.
Yeah, the idea of it. Flip current high school and junior high start times, which I hear that's not necessarily everyone's preference. Referring back to the Fairfax, Virginia, school district, they concluded that flipping the middle school and high school start times were the best way to achieve their district goals of later start for high schoolers. And we've already talked about what that start time was, they start the middle schools at 7:20. And again, I'm not saying I'm in favor of that, but a few school districts did have that model. As far as maintaining the current regional and elementary band, which I think is very important, or community, it's very important with the community. In referencing again the Chulons National Medical Report, the researchers pointed out that the perceived costs eventually, that no district identified a loss of community support, I decided this change in traffic patterns, reduction in student involvement in extracurricular activities as a consequence of later start. So in light of this, I have two ideas to mitigate the transportation costs for elementary band program. First would be to offer transportation only to Title I schools, and then everybody else gets there on their own. Second is that the district could offer transportation in an alternative modality. For example, and you all know that my son attends private school, the school provides bus servicing along main thoroughfares essentially, and essentially the transportation services are similar to public transit, so they have bus stops at park and rides and business parks. So parents drag their students to these regional bus stops, which would save the district with transportation time and money from needing to route buses to specifically our homes. So we could have Boffo Park Ride or Woodinville Park Ride, but these are just thinking outside the box here.
So, yeah, just not to get too far down the weeds, right now, they ride on existing buses that are already running junior high buses. And so actually, what you're suggesting would be a whole different set of buses that would add more to the service model.
I actually, that's my mistake for not knowing that information ahead of time.
So that extra, that extra ride is getting from the junior high back to elementary schools. So they're giving it back.
So my, my, we could use that as a plausible scenario for any of the other options that might.
Well, the larger idea you talked about is sort of a regional transit system type of service model, that's something that we've discussed. It's sort of similar to having your junior high, high school students ride together, or even having your K-12 students ride together, where you're not looking at busing so much as a level, but you're looking at busing as a region. And so you might, same bus might have K-12 or seven, 12 students on it, and then it makes multiple stops at different schools. So from the standpoint of being able to potentially move or have times aligned differently than we have them now, it's a positive. The downside of that potentially could be you're going to have longer bus rides, because rather than that bus picking up here and dropping off here, that bus is going to make multiple drop offs. And so depending on where you're at in that drop off rotation, you may actually have to catch your bus earlier. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Again, to elementary band, go ahead.
Oh, I just was going to say, just so you don't get in trouble with the music, because it's not an extracurricular, it's a core.
Oh, I'm sorry. I support band and music. Let me say that very clearly. I do not want to take that out. That's not, for me, that's.
You don't want to get any.
So in maintaining the current regional elementary band, in, let's see. What was I going to say? Oh, I read those. Okay, and then, almost finished here, servicing the highly capable. As of last year, highly capable programs are mandated by the state at each student's homeschool. So one of the purposes, I believe, of the E programs was to cost effectively service highly capable students through regional satellites. And so as we heard from the principal at Bear Creek on our school visit last year, there are at least two highly capable students at that school, and maybe more who have elected to receive highly capable services within their own classroom, despite the fact that they're offered at Bear Creek. Similarly, with the new state regulations, there are most likely students who have been identified as highly capable and are choosing to receive services in their school rather than attend a regional E program. So I'm wondering, as we become better at servicing highly capable in their own homeschool, will we then have more children over time opting out of the regional program? So now that the state has mandated this, are we out of sync with the E program having it satelliteed? And.
I think it's growing, actually. But it's still, it's up to investigate.
That's my question.
It's up to investigate.
Keep going. And due to the new state regulations concerning highly capable students with the regional E program cost speed that are utilized in other priority areas such as later start, and that would be the same for AAP. And then two more, the transportation fund, you asked about spending down all that money, and then I think that's a possibility, but I think of this differently. Instead of spending the transportation vehicle fund and draining our resources, my suggestion would be that we borrow the money from ourselves. And for example, similar to a bank loan, we borrow the monies from the TBF and then make a repayment plan. And then the money for the repayment plan could be earmarked from the general fund, and we can make a payment plan, the stuff we need to buy buses. We could make a payment plan over the course of three, five, or more years, and we could also include payments with interest to cover the loss of interest from drawing down on these funds.
So you saw the budget, our three year budget projection, and I didn't see any extra money in there. But did you have an idea of where that money would come from to pay back?
I mean, that's what we'd have to look at, or maybe part of it would be the cost savings of the, you know, middle school, high school busing, we could pay it back out of, I'm not sure.
That would be a trouble from the budget, the budget back, to pay it back. That would be budgeted.
Right. And all of our programs and everything comes through the general fund, so.
That money would be budgeted.
And where.
It's budgeted in.
So you should budget that in.
Okay. It would have to come from somewhere, is what I'm saying.
That would be there.
I think it's great to be thinking about different scenarios and solutions.
I just went through the list and said, where could, where's the value added, and where have districts done some other things than that? So that was, that was mine, my two cents, which I worked very hard on that two cents, by the way.
Which is very.
That's a long, hard two cents. And then the other thing was, one last thing was, Clackamas School District in Oregon, they engaged in a pilot study. And so if you guys are talking about a study and having the community, we could potentially move, again, thinking outside of the box, move one of the high schools, like they did to 8:45. They found by moving that one school, then they did an outcome study based on that, and they found that students have again improved attendance, GPA, less tardiness. And they also indicated that their pilot study had large community acceptance of shifting later start times, similar to our district. So we already have that acceptance, we might not exactly know the best way to implement it, but we could start with a pilot study, potentially moving at least one school, which would save 1,500 times one hour, times 180 days, we're talking how many hours of sleep. So again, at least we're making impact on some kids, again, that's not all, but we're, I think, demonstrating the community, our integrity, our willingness, I'm not saying we're not now, but by doing that and saying, hey, let's start with Boffo, because that's probably the easiest transportation, my guess would be, maybe wouldn't know, I don't know which ones they, where you have to move, where transportation would be less impacted.
I, so, I don't think that I would agree with that, because you're not shifting the other schools, you're not getting real clear, if you're just shifting one, you're not impacting the elementary or the junior high to have a real clear picture of now the community would fully react to district wide plus you're, it seems like to me you're just putting, you know, dragging it out a little bit longer. I would really rather that we did something for all of our children as soon as possible. So, and that's the, well, I see with that two cents, but I'd really appreciate the two cents and the thought behind it. But I, but I would disagree that we need to, we need to get on with this and move forward, and by doing that one school, you're not really getting a clear picture of, you know, have district wide, so I think that we need that back. We can all redo bicycle.
You probably won't like my alternative idea, interim idea then either, but I was going to kind of feed off of that pilot idea of, what if we flesh out our seventh period? So if we have seven periods available to all students at all high schools, with a 1 through 6, 1 through 7, 2 through 6 option, not, probably not be able to do transportation for 2 or 7, but at least then we can start doing some data collection of who's choosing, why are they not choosing the 2 through 7 option, what are the things that are getting in their way? Is it because we go to competition, is it because I have babysitting duties or after school activities, or I want seven periods, or what is it that would, or the reason why we would not choose to sleep that extra hour, and then we can build a system that is around, that goes with those issues?
Could you clarify the busing, you said not providing busing, or periods 2 through 7?
Two and 7.
Two and 7. So to get to second period, or, sorry, to get to second period or to leave after 7, it's kind of similar to what we have now, but if you're taking the seventh period, you don't get transportation home. Just because I'm not sure that we could have enough buses and bus drivers by this fall, we can, yeah, but.
Are you saying you're in favor of 2015, if we can?
I'm in favor of fleshing out seventh periods by 2015 as a way of interim.
But not providing transportation for 2 through 7, only providing transportation 1 through 6?
Again, if we can, if we can, I don't want that to be a reason why we don't provide that option.
So on the seventh periods, I suggest that we provide transportation 1 and 7, which provides for people to take all seven.
And then not 6.
Or choose to come late, or choose to leave early.
Right.
I would prefer to see that kind of scenario.
Oh, one second.
One and 7. And then if somebody says, well, I want to not come until second, because they don't need to, or maybe add 6, and it's on their own condition, and that provides for a true 1 through 7 scenario, where you can actually have students receiving transportation that are on the lower income level, that would meet their needs better overall, I think. I do too, and I don't think that it means that we derail the later start.
And I'm not.
That would be our interim solution, is what I hear both of you saying, until 2017.
But if that doesn't change the start times.
Can I throw something out?
As an interim solution.
Well, because people can come to second period.
Okay, so, I, on the spreadsheet for the 2015 options, there is this option in column D, where there is a 20 minute shift for high school, and only a five or 10 for elementary.
Column D?
Column D. It does have a bump in cost, it needs 16 buses, 16 new bus drivers. But if, explore the possibilities here, if we did that combined with the 1 through 7 idea, I mean, could that be something that would help us then work on the full process for 2017? Would that be something that would, so that is, that, okay, so this one is the 2017 spread? No, and this one is worse. This is the for year 2017, these are, I don't mean, this is a different one. So 2015 is the really tiny one. So it's in column D, so the idea is, high schools would start at 7:40 and get out at 2:15. Junior highs start a little later at 8:15. The early elementaries start at 8:55 to 9:10, and the late elementaries start at 9:25 to 9:30. So they would not, and it has, this might be something we'd have to clarify, it has appeared that they would be getting out later at 3:50 to 3:55. But I noticed on the second page, in one of the assumptions, is that the PM drop off times for late elementary would remain the same. So it's, and then there is cost information about it too. It's not free, it would cost about $800,000 more, so it would impact our fund balance a little bit, and it would, it requires 16 more buses.
You could pay that.
Which, you know, is 16, is 16 in a small timeframe, it's much seems to me logistically easy, and 60 in a small timeframe. So, but, you know, I'm throwing this out just as, you know, because I hear two, two separate dynamics going on, you know, talking about the full process, about looking at the best way to do 2017, and also a desire to try to help students with something in the meanwhile. And I'm sure I'm just brainstorming. That's what I'm doing.
And doing a carry time through 7 like that.
So I'm going to just, I want to back up on the 1 through 7. My quick math says that's over an $8 million cost.
To.
Universal seven period day high school.
Due to salaries, mostly, or just, just.
Just staff costs.
Staff costs.
And actually, actually, it might be less than that. I think I was doing rough math, 500 FTE, taking all secondary, but if it's just high school, you're going to have a smaller. But regardless, it's a significant, it's a multimillion dollar cost, it's not a several, several hundred thousand dollar cost.
Were we not moving the seventh periods anyway, if anyone?
We're not busing.
Well, incrementally, and with busing is what I'm hearing, so if there's a.
We're saying bus 1 and 7, not bus 1, 2, 6 and 7.
But we may not have many offerings, as of yet, at all the high schools for seventh period?
We're trying to incrementally grow them, we made a small step last year, I think we need to continue, regardless of this conversation, we need to continue to make steps into the future, particularly as we move towards the 24 credit graduation requirement. I was just pointing out that ideas seem to be universal 1 through 7 day with transportation at 1 through 7. The staffing cost of the universal 1 through 7 all at once is significant. The 1 through 7 transportation as well, we're going to run into the same issue then of concurrent busing, because if you don't elongate the other. into the same issue then of concurrent busing, because if you don't elongate the other days, you're going to then have overlapping transportation, because you're gonna, that, that high school day is gonna run into the elementary, the middle school, the junior high.
So I wasn't, I don't know if this makes any difference, I actually, I've been proposing a mandatory one-through-seven day, but I can see that there's still, is even needed to, two-through-seven, that is interesting, so...
If, if, yes.
I'd, I'd like to see the numbers on that, and then run off the top of your data page, no, but I think that would be a good thing to have a conversation about.
It's a one-sixth, my, my calculation is you're adding, you're increasing staffing levels by one-sixth, and so, is that be right?
For secondary, all of secondary, though?
If you're doing all of secondary, yes, that's where I was kind of coming, I mean, eight million dollars, but Lydia's over there with her calculator.
But we already have some, we're already offering some, so you're not implementing...
We're offering, yeah, we're offering a very small...
Well, I, I believe that our, when we had this discussion before, though, our understanding was that we would be increasing those annually as well, so...
That's what Larry just said, that, that we're incrementally increasing them.
Oh, we're, we're increasing that this year, right? I think I heard that in one of our study sessions.
Well, we, we certainly hope to, as soon as we see a reliable budget come out of the legislature.
And I feel compelled to remind board members that in 2017, we will have the expenses for another high school, significant budgetary hit, and, so I just think we need to be realistic about what we're spending as well.
We also just want to keep in mind too, the, 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 the primary center next year, which is on a smaller scale essentially than elementary, near, near the equivalent of an elementary school from just an infrastructure staffing standpoint, as well as the lease on that, which has already been factored into the budget.
So, bottom line, I'm hearing from board members that you're pretty open to exploring options and exploring opportunities, and there's very little that's off the table in terms of parameters.
The only thing, I'm gonna circle around it, it's crazy, but the eliminating district-wide transportation for junior high students to access high school courses.
Yeah, that's off the table for me.
So, obviously for this fall, but also in 2017, it's not gonna be the same numbers, but we're gonna still have kiddos that are gonna need access to math classes that are not going to be available at the middle school for them. And again, this gets back to that, I'm not feeling like I'm the right person to be making this decision, but we need to be thinking about how do we provide the math rigor for a child that's ready for Algebra II in the eighth grade, whether it's them online, or still providing a busing up to the high school, or what, those kids are still gonna exist, and so, I mean, it just kind of gets back to that, somebody else, I mean, there should be people with more smarts and more knowledge around this, and this should be part of our middle school task force conversation, of, there's still gonna be these kids, and the language, you know, we've got language in the eighth grade right now, and we're not offering all of the languages at middle school, are we going to bus kids up to access the other languages in the eighth grade for equity of access, right? So if we just have Spanish and French at middle school level in the eighth grade, are we gonna allow kids to go up to the high school for German and Japanese and Chinese and those other languages, or are we gonna say, no, we don't need English?
Right, and I think that's, you know, part of the greater reconfiguration that's going on, I think we're gonna naturally...
Right, but I'm, I'm thinking again, in this bigger picture of this conversation, and looking at that one in specific, we've gotta have people having, answering those questions, because there, we certainly have members of the community that language in the eighth grade is very important.
For sure.
But, so it's gotta flow into this conversation.
And I think we are helped, though, getting ninth grade up to the high school.
Oh, absolutely, the numbers will change, but it's not going away unless we...
Right, but I think, you know, you won't have twenty-five to thirty percent of your freshmen, of a, of a class looking to access this class.
Right, but it's still a cost, or we have to create, we have to tell our middle school task force, uniform language.
Right, or, yeah, that's not a reason you go up to high school.
Right, exactly, so, anyway, just by raising that is, you know, this is a very complex issue to look at.
So what concerns me about this is that we continue to, as many times as we say, get into the weeds on every little bitty thing that can be possibly entertained on this, a community sent in a suggestion for an eight o'clock start time, a forty-minute later start time interim plan that just moved the later start elementaries, and therefore met the requirements that I've heard the board say was acceptable, did sound, get a chance to entertain that suggestion from Amy Fisher, and do you have any feedback on that?
So it, it pushes a double busing issue to the end of the day, so if, I, I would need to go back and review her plan carefully, but I know we did discuss it, and I'm looking for Ryan to see if he's back there, but I...
He is.
Yeah, I think if I, if I understood her plan correctly, it essentially said, move later at the beginning of the day, and start all of the elementary schools at their same time right now, so you're going to have a period of the day where you're, where we're gonna need to be busing essentially two tiers at the same time, where we currently only bus one tier, so it's gonna be some variation of one of the models that's in there.
I think she specified which variation it was, I think I highlighted it, I'm not absolutely certain, because I have a lot of small print, but I think I got it.
And that wasn't that wheeling, just...
Yeah, I believe... Oh, it wasn't that, I'm sorry.
I believe it's a three-tier system is what you're looking at, so to bus a three-tier system, you're gonna have to add more buses to your, to your elementary level, based on the, the capacity, maybe it's a yes, we, we random the models, and you're gonna have to do it based on the number of students you're trying to...
How many more lessons?
Not quite sure yet right now, but we can certainly get that information.
It's gonna be some variation on one of the models that's in here, if you're, because so, essentially every router, every driver right now does four tiers, if you knock that tier out, there's gonna have to be added capacity to fill that void.
I'd certainly be interested in seeing that as a suggestion from staff for one of our scenarios, to move forward on that.
Certainly, too, I think there's one that there that's probably close to it.
I think, I think it is, so I'd like to see some of it.
Okay.
So, back to board members, and I think we are, I think our next thing that we talk about is time, 2015, 2016, 2017, what are we, I'm hearing a lot of scenarios, I'm hearing a lot of possibilities, and I'm interested in what board members feel is realistic.
I'll jump in. I, for, for 2015, I definitely would like to hear, see details about an S idea, but while it's not perfect, this idea of moving high school start time to seven forty, and then we wild for 2017, I'm, I'm in favor of, it seems to me that there's an added benefit of having an incremental, I think you mentioned that, I can't really, of, instead of having the large jump in terms of financially getting the buses in 2017, getting sixteen buses now, and especially with staffing concerns, finding more drivers, kind of having a stepped approach, would have some benefits from that side, and while it's not eight o'clock, it seems to be the, the options here, it was the lowest cost to implement, which makes me feel a little more confident that, that the general fund will have an extra eight hundred thousand dollars in there for some more bus drivers, so, I'll just throw that out, but I, you know, are we...
From where?
Well...
I, I think that's Lydia's job.
Yeah, we could ask what the impacts would be, you know, I'm not saying, you know, if, I would like to understand the ramifications of that, but peeking at the budget status report for today, you know, the graph, we're showing a little bit more space on there than years past, and so I'm hopeful that we could find the money.
So, just, just for clarification, I, I appreciate you, I appreciate you being open-minded and considering some options, other than, you know, we can't do anything, the seven forty, do you then foresee that as an interim, and the eight o'clock is the final time? Because I, I'd say that, you know, with the American Academy of Pediatrics making a statement for eight thirty, I think that we would be much better serving the kids to shoot for eight thirty, and I'm kind of wondering, can we still shoot for eight thirty off of the seven forty?
The, the reason why I like that option is because it didn't impact music, it didn't impact E, it didn't impact freshman academy, you know, and twenty minutes is kind of, you know, good not being the enemy of the perfect, at least it gave us a little relief, but in terms of, I still think we need to go through the full process for 2017, and whether or not, you know, the resolution is worded, but no earlier than eight o'clock, starting in 2017, if, if we can make it so that we can support all the programs, I'm not against an eight-thirty start time for sure in 2017, if, if our system can support it, I just don't want it to be earlier than eight in 2017, so, I don't know if I'm answering your question.
No, but your, but your language says I'm kind of a, a bit of a negative framing of that, instead, instead of just saying, I'm for an eight-thirty start time, it's, I'm not against an eight-thirty start.
Well, and I think that's an accurate portrayal, I'm kind of like Sandy, where, you know, in terms of, sometimes I just have to refer back to my reference point as a parent, and as a parent, eight thirty would cost, cause problems for my own kids, you know, I have, I have a son who is doing simultaneously a five-day-a-week sport, DECA state competition, FBLA, private music lessons, and then he's trying to referee on Saturdays to earn money, and so getting out too late in the day would actually be difficult for him, so, but that's my input, and if, if the community says the rest of the, you know, that this is the right thing to do, and eight thirty's the right thing to do, I will totally support that, but that's just from my sterling vantage point I have when I do that math around eight thirty. So, yeah, I'm agreeing with you, you know, I, I'm firm, I don't want it to be earlier than eight, but, and I'm, but I'm open to eight thirty, but I, I need some more information.
I think you're saying a lot of what, from a parent perspective, I think that you're thinking in terms of a lot of what many parents or community members might initially think, however, again, in this report of studying the high schools, that it changed to later start, they found that though there were these concerns, and they list out the concerns, and one of them is what you've stated from parents, and what they found in the end, that was, it was important to note that most of the concerns that were brought up regarding later start times were not actually actualized, so that in the end, these, these concerns that were valid in the beginning, they found that, you know, kids' schedules, they actually felt better, they felt more invested in their activities, they felt like they wanted to participate in more because they were getting that sleep, and that community activities and different scheduling around them shifted with them also, from basically all the studies, but I think you're talking...
Right, and I think, you know, referencing Fairfax, that was getting them to an eight-o'clock start time, not they weren't, you know, that, that the date it wasn't, because they never were...
Some of these schools, they start at nine thirty in high schools, so, I mean, it was, it was a mixture between eight, eight, but most of them weren't at eight, most of them were maybe eight fifteen to nine thirty, so I think what you're saying is valid, but also is found.
Right, and just where I am at this point in time.
I totally understand that, and I, I'd just like to remind, it is extremely important, I'm reading right from this report, emphasize the health and safety benefits associated with providing students the opportunity to get more sleep, and the potential benefits go far beyond academic improvements, I think that when we talk about it, it's, I, I totally get it, for years I've been talking about late start because my son was up at six AM doing jazz band, so, you know, my personal experiences have been what they've been, past now, they've graduated, but it's important to remember that what we're doing as a board work is to improve the educational outcome for kids, and what's most important is the data and the studies that we have at our disposal that say eight thirty instead of eight o'clock, and I think that that's really where we need to focus our energy.
Right, and I totally hear that, but, you know, to use my son as a continued example, his, his extra activities actually are critically important to his performance during the day, and if we get information back after going through the process of gathering information, and those programs aren't impacted, then, then that's, that's just the vantage point from where I come from, that he, his grades improve when he is more integrated with the school, and I took, I won't bore you with the examples, but it's very true, and so if, if he loses the ability to do some of those, I, I believe it would negatively impact him, and that's why I want, I'm not saying no, I'm saying I want to learn what kind of ramifications there would be from an eight thirty, and I'd particularly like to get the principal's input on what the ramifications would be.
I, I think that what you're stating is really important, when this report is talking about the importance of the leadership, both the superintendent and the board, and the administrative staff, that it's really important that we have the message, that we give the research, that we educate both our administrative staff, our board, and the community as to why a different start time is the right thing, whether we end up not being able to get there is one thing, because what you're talking about with looking at what the actual objective research says, it doesn't mean that one student might, that they might not have a negative impact from later start, your son possibly did, but the broader...
Well, and we're talking at an eighty, a seventy-minute shift, and so, and I, I would wanna be careful that we don't use this report as a way of telling folks about their, their concerns for their child aren't valid, I think we wanna, wanna be careful that if a parent has a concern about their child and their overall educational experience, that we are not invalidating that, I think it's a very fine line, I mean, it's, it's one thing to have courage to, to go through, and, and, I mean, everything in front of us says moving to eight o'clock is gonna cost a heck of a lot of money, I mean, I think as a board, we're being very courageous in doing this, and so, I don't wanna minimize the fact that we're already making a, a statement, and I, I also, I, I could get into specifics about my son if you might, but I, this is something that's...
I think that's a total, I don't think that that's a... But I think, here's the thing, I think Amy is entitled to her perspective, and I think you are entitled to your perspective as well, and I think this isn't the time to pick apart what Amy is saying, I think it's the time for you to share what's important to you and what you would like to see moving forward, so let's move on with that, if you don't mind, talking about 2015, and sixteen, and seventeen, and where we, you know, what you see as our next step, and where we go from here.
I started the conversation with what I saw as the next step, right off the beginning, I said I was willing for some kind of an interim plan, really liked Annette, not Amy's email that came in from the community, I'd like to see that more at its core, and I'd like to hear more about the seven forty, what does concern me is that it kind of fits into, and then we start at eight o'clock instead of eight thirty, which I think is not the right policy to pursue, but I would like to see an interim plan, at least in 2015, I would really like us to go to eight thirty in 2015, I am not changing my opinion, I would like us to have seven periods, I think we spend a lot of money on a lot of stuff, and I think it's been, you know, on teaching staff for students to have seven periods is not a bad investment, nor do I think that changing bus schedules is a bad investment with our money.